It is 6:03, calling the meeting to order. And Clerk Perillo, can you please confirm the presence of a quorum?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Shepperle?
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Cassay?
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Laught?
He's here. I'll speak for Stan, that this, only this one, this time. Stan, can you hear us? Did he say yes? We'll move forward to the other trustees while we wait for Stan to, for Stan's sound to.
Trustee Bianco?
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Giuliano?
Here.
Thank you.
Testing for Stan. Come in, Stan. Stan, please come in. So we see Stan, does that count as Stan's here? Clerk Perillo? No, it does not yet.
No, it does not. Could we text him? I'm texting him right now.
You are?
Call him. I think it's going to call.
Is he on mute?
Yeah.
I'd ask him again, Sylvia.
Trustee Laught, can you please confirm your attendance?
Say something.
Trustee Laught, can you please confirm that you are in attendance?
Yeah, I heard that, barely, barely hear it.
Turn your mic, turn your speaker up maybe, a little bit. Is there, can we just FaceTime him? He's not going to be on.
I got you, Lauren, I can hear you.
You can hear me? We can hear you, so are you here, Stan?
I can hear you, Lauren.
Can you confirm that you're present?
I'm present.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Which means we have a quorum?
Yes, ma'am, we have a quorum.
Okay, and we have some feedback too, is there any way to turn that feedback off, Jewel?
Yep.
Thank you. Now, we'd just like to stand to the pledge of allegiance. At the risk of hearing feedback, and there is none, thank you Jewel, I would like to call up the members of the Port Jefferson Fire Department for some recognition tonight, special recognition. Thank you. Cern?
Yeah.
Tony? Chris, Christian. Thank you for being here tonight. I am going to do a little bit of, I have a little bit of notes to read through right now, just because I didn't want to leave anything out over the past 10 or 11 months or so, things that came to the fore about the work that the Port Jefferson Fire Department has been doing to help the members of our community stay safe and to, and in the selfless volunteerism that takes, that it takes to do this, didn't want it to go unnoticed. And I, and I know you get a lot of recognition out in the world, in the community, but I thought it was a very important time to recognize you after the recent fire on February 26th, in which you really preserved the health and safety of many people in the community by curtailing that, that blaze in time, in the time that it took for you to respond and get there. And I have sitting here, and I, and this isn't anything I really like to do very often, but we have a reporter who is here who covered that story and is also a resident, and she, she really, we've been talking about this, she, she really recommended this, that we recognize you, and because she's a member of the community and lived in that area and felt like you really protected her neighborhood. So I took that recommendation without any, just, it was, it was right, it was the right thing to do, and I didn't really know else, how else to do it. So we're doing it here. I just want to read through some bullets of some of the activities that you've been responding to lately. March 9th, the Saturday evening rainstorm whereby you deployed the, the town of Brookhaven's newly dedicated, just in the nick of time, high water rescue vehicle, where you responded to numerous water rescue emergencies due to the flooding conditions, collaboration, Port Jefferson Village Code Enforcement team helped you there too, but that was late at night when nobody else was up except for the people who were driving through the streets that got stuck, so, but thank you for that. Earlier, early in the morning on February 22nd, the fire that took hold on East, on East Main Street and Thompson, where a two, two car detached garage was fully involved with one vehicle within, within and one in the driveway. The, I'm reading off of your Facebook post, so it's accurate, the intense radiant heat caused extension to the main residence as well as melted the siding to the house on the eastern exposure. And crew from E5 made an aggressive attack on the garage while L1 conducted searches of the house. Fire was located in the, in the cock loft of the house resulting in an interior fire attack. All occupants were able to escape without injury, however, one of your members was transported to Stony Brook with a minor burn to the hand. You mentioned, and we are too grateful to EMS as your fellow emergency response partners to get involved with this and, and again, come at all times of day, night for any type of emergency, and also to the mutual aid companies from Terryville, Satacet, Mount Sinai, Miller Place, and Stony Brook Fire Department. On January 13th, the Fire Department Engine 2 and Ladder 1 provided mutual aid to a Terryville Fire Department, New York for a structure fire on Cool Place. That's two in one year. No? Hmm, okay. Fortunately, everyone made it out of the house safely, no injuries were, no injuries were reported. On January 6th, Port Jeff Fire Department provided mutual aid to Satacet Fire Department for a structure fire on Old Field Road. The crew from Ladder 1 operated a hose line in the attic and assisted with overhaul operations. Fortunately, no reported injuries. Our, our fellow police department, Fire Departments in districts nearby work together often through collaborative mutual aid agreements. Early morning, January 5th, Fire Department personnel provided mutual aid to Terryville Fire Department for a structure fire. First arriving crews from both departments made aggressive interior attacks before transitioning to a defensive operation. The home was under construction resulting in quick and unpredictable fire spread. Fortunately, there were no injuries. On the morning of December 6th, the Fire Department R7 responded to a single car motor vehicle accident on Main Street near Franklin Avenue, right outside of Trustee Cassay's residence, I suppose. The vehicle had struck a utility pole, splitting it at the base. The crew of R7 secured the vehicle, cleared the debris, and mitigated the fluids that leaked onto the roadway. Early morning, November 28th, Port Jeff Fire Department Engine 5 responded to a report of a vehicle fire involving a pickup truck on Perry Street. The engine crew quickly extinguished the fire without incident. Fortunately, there were no injuries to anyone. On the evening of November 21st, Port Jeff Fire Department responded to a vehicle in, to the water at the Brookhaven Town Boat Ramp. The driver and sole occupant of the vehicle was able to self extricate and swim to the dock. He was assisted out of the water by two Good Samaritans. The Port Jeff Fire Department inflatable boat was launched to secure the vehicle to the winch line of Rescue 7, and the car was then winched complete out of the water in order to confirm no additional occupants and further secure the scene. Earlier that same day, Port Jeff Fire Department R7 responded to a single car motor vehicle accident on Main Street near Myrtle Avenue. The vehicle left the roadway and struck a utility pole, splitting the pole at the base. The vehicle was secured and the driver was transported to the hospital by Port Jefferson EMS. November 11th, Port Jeff Fire Department responded to a two car motor vehicle accident on Old Post Road just west of the high school. The two vehicles collided head on causing the Jeep to overturn. All occupants were able to self extricate and were later transported by Port Jeff EMS to the hospital with serious but non-life threatening injuries. The crew from Rescue 7 secured both vehicles and utilized the winch to ride the Jeep before turning the scene back over to Suffolk County Police Department. On October 15th, 2023, at 8:48 PM, Port Jefferson Fire Department was dispatched to a mutual aid assist to Mount Sinai Fire Department for a report of that 12 inch water main break on North Country Road just east of Christopher Cola Road. The Port Jeff Fire Department High Water Rescue 22, Water Rescue 14, and Rescue 7 were dispatched to the call to assist. With combined efforts from Port Jefferson Code Enforcement, the EMS, Mount Sinai Fire Department, and our department were, Port Jeff Fire Department were able to shut down and secure all affected roadways during the length of the operation. Suffolk County Water Authority was able to successfully shut down the water main. Emergency resources were then dismissed. On October 9th, 2023, Port Jeff Fire Department helped rescue a beautiful Sheba named Clementine, whose paw was lodged in the drain of the bathtub. Her humans contacted the fire, contacted the firehouse and the, and the crew from Rescue 7 and Ladder 1 worked to extricate Clementine from the tub. This included cutting the drain out with access from the floor below with a Dremel tool. After the hour long ordeal, a veterinarian was able to determine that Clementine was essentially uninjured. July 16th, 2023, Port Jeff Fire Department was alerted to the, to a tree down on Dark Hollow Road. Units arriving on scene discovered a very fortunate woman who was uninjured when a tree came down on her vehicle while she was driving. Additionally, there were multiple small brush fires that occurred due to downed power lines that were live. Rescue 7 worked to dislodge the vehicle while the crew from Engine 2 extinguished the fire. July 15th, Port Jeff Fire Department was alerted by the U.S. Coast Guard Sector Long Island Sound of a vessel that struck the jetty on the east side of Port Jefferson Inlet. Port Jeff Fire Department Marine 6 responded to the scene where it was confirmed the vessel was well involved into the jetty with three victims. A rescue swimmer, swimmer was deployed from Marine 6 with the assistance of Cito Port Jefferson Rigged Hull Inflatable. Once contact was made with the victims, it was determined that all three had suffered head and facial, facial lacerations of various degrees. In order to safely remove the victims from the jetty, Port Jeff Fire Department inflatable 14A was launched from Anchorage Road. The rescue swimmer from Marine 6 assisted the victims one at a time into 14A when then transported them, which then transported them to Marine 6. Immediate care was given to the most seriously injured on Marine 6. Once all were onboard, they were transported to the town boat ramp where they were received by Port Jefferson EMS and taken to a local hospital. July 11th, 2023, on Tuesday, on that evening, Port Jeff Fire Department responded to a rubbish fire on Texaco Avenue. Engine 2, Engine 5, and Brush 12 responded to extinguish the fire. Two members were treated by Port Jeff EMS for heat exhaustion. That's, that's all we have for now. I, I. I know that isn't, this is, this is a highlight reel of real emergency response and life-saving initiatives, so we are so grateful to every, it's not all you do, but it was some of the, and I know everybody sitting in this room, most everybody anyway, probably remember most of those incidents that happened because they were covered by the news. There, there, it's truly incredible what you all do on a voluntary basis since when 18, this is the Fire Department was established in 1887. So just, you're the, the latest legacy, the three of you chiefs, right? And so I just want to say thank you, and we really appreciate it, and we'd like to take a photo with you, if that's okay? If, would you like to say anything?
Just on behalf of the Fire Department, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for the recognition. We certainly appreciate it, and I will relay everything that you said at our next department meeting. We've had a great working relationship with Mayor Shepperle, and we certainly will moving forward, continue to work on that relationship. We're in constant communication with her when anything is going on in the village. So again, thank you. Much appreciate your communication.
And, and how would wonderful village residents join the Fire Department?
You can stop down and we have applications. They're readily available.
Do you all want to come up and come around front?
Sure.
Maybe Stan. Thank you so much.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Drew, please. Thank you. You know, and one of the things that you don't count on is I listen to all the calls that you go to, and if somebody was cooking food and the steam set off the alarm and another alarm tripped, and it, people don't realize the volunteers go out with all of those too.
Guilty.
Interrupting their day. Thanks.
And just a, just a shout out to Mike Presto, who's sitting in the back. We'll recognize EMS on another day. You deserve your own recognition, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's nothing else. Just kidding. Clerk Perillo, we have some announcements, yeah?
Yes, ma'am, there are two. The first one is election related concerning our upcoming election. It is expected that tomorrow we'll have up on the website our packet for prospective candidates, and that packet will be available electronically on the website as well as in hard copy in Village Hall. Once we expand that section of the website, we will also have a portion for voters, so to help everyone through the process. Announcement number two is that the next upcoming Village Board of Trustees meeting will be a work session meeting beginning at 5 o'clock PM on April 10th. There will be a presentation by Treasurer Gaffka at that meeting regarding the 2024-2025 tentative budget, followed by a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2024-2025 tentative budget.
And then we give it a couple of weeks until we vote on the budget, so the public hearing stays held open, right?
Until the 24th, yes.
Okay.
No, you want to close it?
Mic on?
The public hearing has to be closed by the 20th, so that night has to, it has to close at that public hearing. Unless you want to hold a special meeting.
On the 10th, it, it has to close on the 10th?
It has to be closed legally by the 20th.
I see.
You can leave the comment period open. Here's a written comment. Yes. Written comment.
Yes, the public hearing has to be closed by the 20th.
Microphone.
However, however, we can accept public comment.
Through to the 24th?
Yes.
Okay, very good.
Through the 20th, yes.
Through the 20th?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Is that the end of your announcements? Okay. We'd like to invite Suffolk County Police Officer and Assistant Chief John Barrero and Jim Merdackel on up. Yes, the microphone over there. We, I know, we switched it up a little, sorry.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Trustees, community, I'd like to just introduce myself. My name is Sergeant Tessararo, I'm a Suffolk County Sergeant assigned to the 6th Precinct. I lead our community support unit. Our unit's tasked with a, a bunch of different things that we do. We're an accessory of Patrol, so obviously Patrol is tasked with 911 calls, emergencies. We're their ancillary unit to follow up on community complaints, concerns, and anything that we can do for the community. So before I came, I, I just took a brief look year over year comparing this year to the last year in, in crime info for Port Jefferson Village. Luckily, nothing's jumping off the page as a substantial increase. I do acknowledge there are a few increased criminal incidents, luckily, none of which are appearing to be violent in nature as compared to last year. Non-criminal incidents, we have an increase as well, most of which I'm observing as disturbances. So I've been made aware of ongoing traffic and vehicular complaints that the community has voiced. We're doing several things to, to track that and to combat that. My unit has guys that are dedicated to enforcing these community complaints. We've heard a lot about high crash locations, up and down Route 112 and into the village and out. As the weather gets warmer, we have planned checkpoints, so tell your family members to take care of their cars and stuff. We, we've been aware of disturbances with people and loud engines and, and cars disturbing the community, we're well aware. Come Memorial Day, we're adding another vehicle that, that we do year after year, our whiskey unit, which is just tasked with Port Jefferson Village, and, and the guys over the last few years have done a phenomenal job. They're another component that's solely dedicated to helping you guys. So I guess if there's any questions or, or anything that maybe I should know that could better help you guys, I'm all ears, if anyone has any notes or anything to bring to my attention.
Any questions for Sergeant Tessararo tonight? Suffolk County Police?
I just wanted to note, I went to the 6th Precinct Community Meeting, and it was really informative, a great place to, you know, interface with other, you know, many others in, both in uniform and community members, and to see that some of the issues we're facing here in Port Jefferson are also being faced with other communities, so I was highly recommend and wanted to know when the next one is, so that we can let her.
I don't have a date, I, I can follow up with you and give you an exact date. I, I don't have it offhand.
Great, thank you.
I could follow up and give you that exact date and time.
Thank you very much, thank you. Will we see you again? Okay, all right.
Hi, I'm John Barrero, Deputy Chief, voting in for the chief. He had a prior commitment, he's sorry he couldn't be here. Board of Trustees and the mayor, I just tried to run down our trouble. We've been up to, right now we have the, the trailer on Pine Hill taking stats. Some people were asking where is that at? Now it's on Pine Hill Road and we got that under control. We have an event coming up, a big event at the high school. It's called the upcoming Step, Step Festival Pan. Anyway, it's, buses will drop off athletes at the high school and park in the teacher's parking lot and a lot on Spring Street, Our Lady of Wisdom. Athletes will cut through the middle school, the breezeway to cross the field. Teams will be picked up by buses and we'll be on here in Spectator Park and we'll be at the high school. That's coming up. Uh, March 1st, November 29th. Next, incident reports recap from the month of February. Yeah, total of 44 assist data traffic conditions, graffiti, assist other agencies, Suffolk County PD and EMS. Summon's recap for the month of February 2024. Total written was 267, majority written for uninspected vehicles, 198, no parking standing, 151, overtime parking, 11, parking without a permit, nine, 25 total warnings issued. Location, East Main Street, Saltwater Lot, Main Street and Mariners Lot. Be advised that meter parking has been suspended into the spring and we hope to pick up the revenue when that time comes. Anybody have any questions for me? Okay, I'd like to turn on Jim Madoc, Chief.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board, good evening, Mayor. This, this, you guys can hear? The Quality of Life Unit issued four FATs since the last time we met. They were in total of disorderly conducts. We focused on a different location, which was Walnut, Elm and Perry. We continued resources at the Long Island Railroad with individuals that had nowhere to go. The individuals at times would come off the train as it being the last stop on the railroad, some had no resources or anywhere to go. We were able to provide them that information and we did get good feedback from a few individuals that actually took the information and, and ran with it. We are continuing to meet the store owners. We started with the Uptown area on Main Street. With the, the feedback we got again was positive. They voiced some concerns within the certain area back by Texaco Park and we noted that. We are continuing the log entry and data information as far as any destroying of property and that has been a success as well. Thank you.
You could stick around for one second, Jim, because I just wanted to let the community know that in, in your work as Chief Investigator, you assisted with, with a Stony Brook University issues of theft on the campus there where the alleged was bringing the stolen goods back into Port Jefferson and selling them here. And you were able to identify this person, connect with the Suffolk, with the Stony Brook University Police Department and help them identify and apprehend the, the person who is alleged to have done those crimes. So, you, we received a letter from Stony Brook's Division of Enterprise Risk Management, the Deputy Chief Security Officer there, and he just wanted to recognize you to us that this was something that they really appreciate the collaboration with. And so, just wanted to let you know that that letter came in and thank you very much for your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for, any questions at all for our code enforcement theme?
Has that graffiti calmed down a little up, up for port?
Is your mic on?
Oh, I'm sorry. Has the graffiti calmed down a little bit? That was on the black building, the title building. It seemed like, it would appear, they painted over it, it appeared again.
So, it, it, there was an increase.
Yeah.
Like I said, we, we had to come up with a system that would track, including daytime, the material, and that gave us more room to contact the, the store owners. That kind of trickled, it died down a little bit and it's picking back up. So, we've been in contact with the right authorities in, in certain areas to send that information over.
I drove past it today and both sides were totally black. No, no, no graffiti on either side, so...
They've been extremely responsive.
Yeah, yeah.
It's, I feel bad for them. Every time they turn around, they must corner the market on black paint.
Yeah. They, they, like I said, they've been very responsive and we're working with them and they've been in contact with us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we have a presentation, an invited presentation from the Port Jeff Chamber of Commerce and Director of Operations, Barbara Ransom. Thank you Barbara, Barbara for being here.
The mayor, I thank you, the mayor and the Board of Trustees. We were asked to speak tonight just to tell you about some of the great things that we're doing at the Chamber of Commerce and we thank the Board that they value and appreciate the chamber because I think we do add a lot to our community. So, first of off is this Sunday, which is Easter and that means EB will be out there. We have a parade and an Easter egg hunt and it starts at 12 in front of Theater 3 and it's a non-mechanical, walking, old-fashioned town parade. Everyone's invited. We end up in front of the Village Center where we release the hounds. We have 3,800 eggs that we'll be distributing earlier that day in the morning and it's a big Easter egg hunt and then the EB will be there until 2 o'clock for photo ops. We're trying something new this year. We're asking the children if they're so inclined to donate back their empty eggs for an Easter surprise, so we're going to try to recycle these eggs. And so, it should be great fun. The weather's looking nice, it's looking like it's going to be fairly warm and sunny and we get a huge crowd. Last year we went through over 250 individual pieces of chocolate from children that had photos with EB. So, it's a community event. The banner's up, it's free, so we get a lot of activity, so all are welcome. And really, it's the kids between 2 to 8, so there you have it. The next major event that we're doing is April 13th. This is the 15th year we've done our Health and Wellness Fest. It is going to be held at the Meadow Club from 9 to 1. This is a huge event for the chamber and I have to tell you, I don't know what's changed, maybe people have finally done with COVID, but we're expecting 95 tables this year. Last year we had 75. That's a huge increase and we have our four major sponsors that have been very generous and always helping us out sponsoring this event. Stony Brook Medicine, New York Cancer and Blood Specialists, our two local, local hospitals, Mather Hospital, Northwell Health and Catholic Health, St. Charles Hospital. It is a free event. We have smaller sponsors as well, but it's going to be a lot of fun activities. We have actually a roller derby company coming, you know, because that's nice physical activity for health. The paddle pub that some of you may know about in the village, I mean, that's good physical activity as well. Also drinking here later. The Harmonic Egg, I don't know if anybody knows about this little thing you get in and you just umm for an hour. The Muse Painting is going to be there. St. Charles Hospital, once again, is going to be providing their Healthy Food Court. This year we're having overnight oatmeal for breakfast and then Asea Bowls with all the toppings and it's free and it's great. And we're also going to have therapy animals this year. So, we have the Smithtown Blind, School Blind, however that works. The last year they brought their ambassador dog Kurt. We have a few other therapy dogs that are going to be there as well. So, again, exciting. The venue is lovely because it's outside a little bit if we want to go outside and the weather, I hope, will be good. So, again, Health and Wellness, April 13th from 9 to 1 at the Meadow Club. From April 13th, we roll into, we know how popular all these food crawls are. So, the chamber in cooperation with the Business Improvement District, we help organize three of them. Of course, the first one starts in January with the mac and cheese that sells out. Into this one and this one's going to be a brunch. We haven't done a, we've never done a brunch per se, we've done breakfast crawls, but this one's a brunch from 11 to 2. And again, it is going to be April 21st, that's a Sunday. Ticket is a ticketed item, it'll be $30 and we have already 13 or 14 restaurants that are going to be involved. And it's not, it's, it's, it could be beverages, even Killwin's is going to be involved, so I'm not sure what they're going to be doing, but we should have nice participation and it's rain or shine. Rain or shine, no refunds, just to let you know on that. And just jumping ahead a little bit, just if you want to mark your calendar for June, we have Sounds on the Sound, that's going to be on the ferry. It is on June 14th, that's Flag Day. It's TGIF Flag Day Sunset Cruise. Last year it was very popular, we had a Motown band there, it was a 19-piece band, they played on the top deck. We have VIP tickets and general admission tickets and it's a great fundraiser and the first year we had it, I couldn't tell you what lovely weather it was. Absolutely dead, drop dead sunset and then that night it was a strawberry moon. If anyone's not familiar with that, the moon rises and it's totally red until it finally gets up into the sky and so it's a great event. So, those are four major events that we're involved with and thank you for this opportunity to share this with the community mayor and board.
Quick question, who, who's the band on Sounds on the Sound?
It's a woman's name. She specializes in, it's called Women of the 80s. So, she does Pat Benatar and name a few other people, but she's very good and she gets up in costume and everything and will be on the top deck.
Awesome, that sounds great.
All right.
Thank you Barbara.
Thank you very much.
Okay, our next announcement will come from Clerk Perillo.
We have a public hearing this evening and I'm asking for a resolution to open that public hearing regarding a proposed local law creating Part 1 Administrative Legislation, Chapter 7 Budget and Finance Committee of the Code of the Village of Port Jefferson. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
I think I saw Stan mouth the word aye.
I'll say it, aye.
Okay, thank you. Next.
So, we'd like to know if anyone from the public would like to...
This is a public hearing, right? Okay, so we're inviting any first from the trustees, comment on the local law about the Budget and Finance Committee? This is a newly established local law, Chapter 7, it's being proposed as, and it follows the appointment of the Budget and Finance Committee members who have met once already. The reason why we are creating this as part of the code is to provide for its longevity and its continued success and implementation in, in village law. Any, any feedback from you Attorney Moran?
You eloquently stated it, Mayor, there was, back in, I believe, earlier in the, in mid 2023, we established the committee and it was the intent of the Board to codify it in village code and this is the process set forth. If, if you compare the code as proposed to the charge of the Board at the time when it was created, the committee when it was created, you'll see it's basically the same. Just continuing to move that committee forward and legitimize them by adding it to the code and hopefully it'll create the longevity the Board desires.
And I appreciate any opportunity for members of the public to become more involved in the government's decision-making processes. The budget happens once a year, there's the public hearing and public comment, but I'm excited for the idea that there will be a group of residents and maybe more accessibility from residents, you know, to residents at large to be able to be a part of those, the knowledge and the fiscal decisions moving forward.
Mayor and Board, if I may, under letter C of the...
I can talk about this.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. So, as it was originally prescribed in the intent of the committee, which was, as Attorney Moran mentioned, was back in, in the summer of 2023, the original construct of the committee is five members nominated and appointed by a majority of the Board of Trustees, including the mayor, and serve for two, two-year term expiring on June 30th. I wanted to actually address that a little bit with this Board to inquire as to whether you have any tolerance for changing that two-year term to three years and having those terms be staggered, whereas the first, the first committee that's been established are all in for one year. From here forward, two will be one year, two will be two years and one will be three years so that there is a staggered transition and appointments, so we aren't really trying to fill replacements of this committee with and as replacements to this Board of Trustees may occur. So, we really don't want that to coincide with the change of the Board of Trustees. Whether or not the Board of Trustees changes, it's just similar to many of our other committees, there are a staggered number of years that the committee serve. In fact, we just, didn't we just codify the Parks and Recreation Advisory Council to have additional staggered years and moved the number of years to serve from five to three, something like that? So, it's a little more realistic to serve for three years because you just sort of get your momentum and you're, you're moving ahead. You're learning the ropes, as, as Trustee Beyonda said, so this, now, if, if we, can we, if the Board has interest in doing this and if we get public feedback or if we don't get public feedback that expresses a difference of opinion, would we be able to change this description to that tonight?
As presented by the mayor, the staggering of the terms.
Yes.
I would not consider a change that would require republic, republishing the notice and having a separate public hearing.
Okay.
So, I would say we'd be able to make those amendments and when it's filed with the Secretary of State, it will reflect the changes as set forth by you, your...
Okay. Any feedback on that, from the Board?
Thanks, good idea.
Yeah.
Microphone's on?
Yes. Was the speaker into it? I think it's a very good idea.
Oh, thank you. All right.
The appointments, they're not beholden to one Board, it'll always change.
Correct, yeah. Okay, any, any comments from the public? Hearing none?
I have some.
Okay, Stan?
I think going forward, I think it's an excellent idea. It comes in line with all of our other committees, staggered terms, three-year maximum on a term. Somehow, if we can get to that point.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that feedback. Okay, hearing no further feedback. Time to ask for a resolution to close the public portion regarding the proposed local law. Do we have a motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Clerk Perillo, will you read the next resolution, please?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Resolution adopting the proposed local law as attached and amended, creating Part 1 Administrative Legislation, Chapter 7 Budget and Finance Committee of the Code of the Village of Port Jefferson. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Yes, he did. All right, now, we'd like to invite the public to address the Board of Trustees if we have any public comment this evening. This would be the time to... If we have any public comment this evening, this would be the time to take your place Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Janice Fleishman Eaton, 23, Old Post Road East, Port Jefferson. I want to thank you for your hard work. I've decided to come and talk with you. I added a comment that, besides what I planned when I opened the, the Times main section today. It says, "The couple rescuing seals trapped in debris as millions watch." And there was a statistic, a staggering statistic included that said, "It is estimated that 21,000 pieces of plastic are in the ocean for every person on the planet." So I was happy to talk about this because Port Jefferson's doing good things to try to mitigate that. I understand the CAC has taken on a position to restrict single-use plastics at the Village Center for Events. I think we're moving towards that. So it's an overwhelming problem, but little steps help. I'm in a local environmental club called EcoLeague, and we have sanctioned three of our establishments in Port Jefferson that encourage you to bring your own containers, so to decrease single-use plastics in our village. And Tiger Lily, South Down Coffee, and Locals all have a BYO, be, bring your own sticker in their window or in a frame to let people know that, you know, encourage you to bring your own for beverages. That's the closest we could, that's the most we think we could do because of the Department of Health, their restrictions on these kinds of things. The, the original reason why I wanted to come and speak to you is about the problem that I share with probably everyone in, in our community, and that safe walking, it's, it's lacking in, in Port Jeff. I live on the east side. I live on Old, Old Post Road East, near Laurel and Old Post, and you're familiar with that area. And I've been walking, I, I moved into that home in 1990, and I've been walking with or without my dog on that street and have had multiple scary moments with cars. And what's happening, it's gotten even worse because the debris, the, the foliage has encroached in between Laurel going east to the Riviera, if there was ever a shoulder in the first place. So I was walking there today, and then I noticed, like, over the years, there's been asphalt curbs that have been put on either side. They've crumbled over the years many times, so the answer is not asphalt. And then that asphalt creates kind of falling, like, almost holes that I noticed. So if I had to jump away from a car, I would probably break, break my ankle on the side of the road where the, where it's really grasses that are cut between the road and the tree line on the, on maybe north side of, of Old Post East. So, you know, the obvious reason why we need sidewalks is for safety, right? We, they're, Suffolk County has the highest rate of injury and death with pedestrian or bicyclists and cars out of the, in the whole state. So it's a dangerous thing to walk out. I mean, I, I'm, I'm not sure, but I would think that people don't walk to the village or to the beach because there are no sidewalks, no sidewalks to push a carriage, no sidewalks for your kids to ride their bikes so that we could be outdoors moving. And the suburbs were engineered for the cars. They, you know, they weren't engineered for people to walk. But we know now that that's not good for our health in many ways. So the, so many reasons, you know, our bodies are actually engineered to move, and we know that the sitting is the new smoking. So I just want to make, help make our village healthier. I want it to be safe to walk. I, I would hope that all the other reasons, such as less cars on the road, less emissions, less parking problem, we don't have to bring our cars downtown, will all help move this along and not wait for, you know, some terrible accident to happen before we start making signs. I just, I do hope also that the, the paths or, or however we try to move ahead with this would be with some type of material that is also good for drainage, because I would, I wouldn't want more pavement because we have the problem with our aquifer and the drainage and the flooding and on and on, you know, with, with those problems too. So thank you for your time and attention, and...
Thank you for your care and concern.
Thank you, Janice. I'll just share very briefly. The village did invest in a walkability study, sort of a first step in the right direction to this, to Janice's point. She's very much not alone in the desire to have more walkable, bikeable, jogable streets. And so the village had essentially an assessment of the main arterial roads throughout all of the neighborhoods in Port Jefferson. So not just the commercial districts, but also going out, you know, thinking about Myrtle Avenue, Old Post, you know, Oakwood down, and then connecting essentially all of our main hubs, so our parklands, our beaches, the transport hubs. And so they assessed all the roads, and the next step is, I just sat down a number of weeks ago with the village planner to introduce him to the study that was done. And so the, the board and Planning Department, moving forward, will get to look at that assessment and hopefully take the next steps, seeking grant funding to start going, looking for low-hanging fruit and the most highly foot-traffic areas to make them safer for our residents.
Thank you for that. Other public comments tonight? After this.
Julie, you good with this mic? Okay. Good evening, board, members of the public. My name is Kevin Wood. I'm 61 years old. I am an employee of the Village of Port Jefferson, hired here as a civil servant, as the position of Municipal Parking Administrator, coming up on seven years, July 17th, 2024, would, would be seven years. My position is not an appointed position. I not, do not serve at the pleasure of the mayor. Rather, I serve the Incorporated Village of Port Jefferson, its taxpayers, residents, businesses, and ultimately serve this board as a whole. I'm married 35 years. I have four wonderful children, two of which are here present tonight, and I have two watching the live stream. I also have my wonderful grandson, who was born 10 months ago, who is being very quiet in there, and I'm very proud of him. I serve as Vice President of the New York State Parking and Transportation Association and plan to be president in January of 2025. On Tuesday, March 19th, at approximately 10:30 a.m., I was verbally told by the clerk and council that due to budgetary reasons, my position would be abolished, my position as Municipal Parking Administrator. This news was and still is devastating to me and my family. I have close to seven years in municipal government. I had planned on retiring at 65, like most people tried to do. That would be 10 years of service, only three more years in which to do so. I know this board and many people in this room know my work ethic. I only know one speed, to get it done. I think anybody in this room could attest to that. Let's get it done. I'm extremely passionate about anything I do professionally. And so from 2017 until last Tuesday, I continued to make the very challenging park environment we have in Port Jefferson here the very best it can be. And we do have one of the most challenging parking environments in the nation. I have suggested and successfully implemented countless policy, suggested policy, technological changes that has put Port Jefferson on the national attention meter of a positive forward-thinking parking environment. In fact, Port Jefferson Village processes 250,000 transactions per season. That's only an eight-month season, 250,000 sessions. There is no other village on Long Island that even comes close to that. We have a limited number of spaces, and I won't go into the complexity of our system, but suffice to say it is extremely complicated and busy. There is no reason why the Municipal Parking Administrator that existed before my arrival would not stay. The village needs and deserves a dedicated parking administrator. As we enter a new parking season, which is right upon us, I was more than prepared to open managed parking. And as usual, full cooperation, newly-formed parking committee, the head is, who is sitting right here, we had talked many times about changes, policies, with myself, the Parking Committee Head, Andy Friling, Head of Building, and we were coming to consensuses, and it was moving forward. Unfortunately, these changes and resolutions have not yet been presented to the board, and I say unfortunately for two reasons. One, managed parking provides the following benefits. And again, I do not want to go into an educational process of managed parking. First, it provides turnover. We need turnover in this village because we have so many, so little spaces. One example of that here in March is Castaway opening. There's incredible amount of people parking in the Castaway streets there, and so we need to manage that parking. And the second is to bring revenue into the village. Revenue is not a dirty word in this village or any other village. We need revenue to come in. This is revenue that you, the taxpayer out there, do not have to pay, comes in through visitors. So as I stated before, the primary reason I was given to abolish my position is budgetary. So let me state openly and honestly, of course, I want this board to vote to keep my position in place and therefore my job. There isn't a person alive or in this room that wouldn't want the same. But let me cite a communication that has come to me as of late, so we can try to fully understand what might be happening here. If the reason for abolishment is truly budgetary, Witness Board accept an almost never-before-heard concept, which is a government employee asking or allowing me to reduce my salary. Unheard of. I've never heard that. To reduce my salary to something that they think might be more reasonable. Why can't we go down that road and talk about that? That allows us to keep the great program we have, my experience, which is unmatched, and I can put food on the table for my family. Some others have asked me, "Why abolish your position, Kevin, to save on the salary? Why not take 2% or 3% from all the employees of the village?" We have less than 60. We're a team, right? Let's everybody meet the woes that apparently we're in a budgetary world. We're having problems, so let's band together and everybody pitch in. Why is it my position that's being abolished? I know at home, when we have budgetary problems, we do things like cut premium channels that affects all six people at home, or we go out to dinner less. I try not to point out any one person in my family and, and take away from them only. That would start a riot. So, so we think in those terms, and we try to be a team. This, this village is a team. It's a small village. It should be a team. We should be there for each other. So if the board's communicating tough times, if so, is it offering a cost savings that don't affect the livelihood of a single department head, myself, with an incredible, incredible amount of experience, expertise, and the proven ability to bring in revenue, therefore protecting the resident's pocketbook, and quite honestly, keeping the salaries of other people? My department is one of the few departments that it's actually, if you were to run this village as a business, is profitable. Not a dirty word. It's just the truth. Parking brings in good revenue. It can help the village wholly, as a whole. Just a short little amount of some of the accomplishments that I've accomplished in the last seven years. I've created a digital revenue before the pandemic that is resulting in up to 81% of parkers paying by their cellphone. This is important because the village never has to put out money for meters, papers, CDMA costs. All those costs are completely abolished. There's simply a cost of the revenue coming in. It's absolutely amazing, and it's, it's what's happening in the parking industry, but we got there first. I was in Stony Brook yesterday hosting a parking seminar, and I'm looking at what Stony Brook wants to accomplish, and I'm going, wow, I, we started that four years ago. The Village of Port Jefferson already did this, and Stony Brook's getting to it now. Be proud of that, everybody. You had somebody that brought this to the table four years ago. I oversaw the complete build-out of the first downtown parking lot in 50 years, the Barnum Parking Lot. I supported keeping that lot free for employees. It is free today, of course, with the help of the board and, and them donning that a free lot. Yes, of course, you approved that. But we're doing the right thing. We're getting employees to places that are, that customers should be in and not employees. Technological improvements included lot counters, EV chargers, we were the first. Text-to-help, we're the first. Merchant billing, we're the first. Security cameras in every lot, we're the first. The new ALPR system and pay-by-play technology, we are also the first. We did it before anybody did it, and it's only going to get better. I founded and managed the New York State's first parking ambassador program. This parking ambassador program is where I interviewed and hired Port Jefferson High School students. We didn't go outside. We went to only Port Jefferson High School students. Trustee Beyondo, your son was one of them. He enjoyed it. He told me that. What's incredible is to get notes back from, they're in college now, and say, they say to me, "Some of my communication skills, the reason why I do so well in college," not saying the only reason, but they were able to get out there and communicate, and it's part of them growing up and maturing, and it's, it's wonderful that we're able to do There's a ton of work to be done here, the season, just the season alone, managed parking agreements, deciding what to do with the LIRR lot, just so much work in parking that may not be seen to the average person. It is hugely complicated. It takes somebody to negotiate and bring to the board what we're up against. We should be planning 10 years from now, 10 years from now, in parking. There's a lot of details and a lot of background going on here, and I do not want this to be an educational place. There will be a time and a place for that. So in closing, I thank you for listening to me, and I do thank my family for being here and support, and I thank everybody that really cares about what I'm about to say. I very much appreciate the board fully hearing from not only me, but others in the community, and ultimately coming to an agreement to keep me employed here in the Incorporated Village of Port Jefferson. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Trustees. Thank you for, for having this meeting tonight. I had like a small, little request. So, oh, sure. Lisa Jager, and I'm at One Jefferson Landing Circle in Port Jefferson Village. So I'm actually going to kind of piggyback on the, the sidewalk thing along Old Post Road, so it was kind of a good opportunity. And I've been wanting to do this for like 20-something years. So I actually, I made a copy for you to see what I'm talking about, if you want it. So I live at the corner of Jefferson Landing and Old Post Road. So I'm very familiar with where she's talking about. I think I know where you live also. And I can't tell you how many times I've almost hit people coming around that corner from Laurel going down the hill towards Old Post Road, and people are walking there. It's very dangerous. Anybody who lives here, I'm sure you know the, the location. So I'm actually here to... So I'm actually here to petition for a stop sign at Jefferson Landing and Old Post Road. And I'm backing this up with some real factual stuff. So back in 1996, Jeremiah Zuli was getting his mail out of his mailbox at number four Jefferson Landing, which is the second house on the right-hand side as you're coming up. And he was struck by a vehicle, and he broke his leg, went to the hospital. So this is going back that far. In 2006, I was gardening down by the bottom of my driveway, and somebody coming up the hill almost hit me, and my dog came out into the, like, the apron of the street, and they hit and killed my dog when we first moved here. So, yeah, my little Pippa. So anyway, but in the past 15 years, we've had, so I live up on the hill. So in the past 15 years, we've had three flipped cars, a motorcycle going down the hill where the rider was seriously hurt, and we actually drove him to the hospital. Countless, I'm also here on behalf of also the admin for the Port Jefferson Village Animal Advocates on Facebook. So we are actually a group that tries to protect our wildlife and to try to keep the feral cat population under control. And I also have a full rehab at my house, Jaeger's Run Animal Rescue, where we rehabilitate animals that are injured here in the village and get them back out into the wild if we can. So countless deer and turkey and other wildlife have been run over in that area. So the problem that we're having is, if anybody knows Old Post Road, this is Old Post Road right here and going up into the village, and this is the left-hand turn that you have to make to come onto our block. And I'm guilty of this also. As you come up to this spot, if you don't see anybody coming, you gun it and you go flying up Jefferson Landing. And if we had a stop sign, that would negate that, that would keep people from doing that. We have, right up the block from there, we actually have three stop signs. We have, they're redundant stop signs, actually. And one is at the corner of Old Post Road and Laurel, sorry, Old Post Road and Laurel, Old Post Road and Puritan, and Old Post Road and Thompson. They're like less than 100 feet from one another. And it's like you gotta stop, and then you gotta stop, and then you gotta stop. But you have that, that area, it's not even when they're coming up to come up Jefferson Landing, when people are coming down Old Post Road, they pass Laurel and they cut that curve. And if there's anybody walking there, it's really super dangerous. And it would negate, I actually, just out of, you know, context, I decided to just drive home from work and go down that curve at a pretty nice rate of speed. And I was actually doing almost 40 miles an hour when I approached that curve. And that's without thinking, and that's without being in a rush. So even if you're at 30 miles an hour and you cut that curve, if there's somebody coming out of Jefferson Landing, it's, there's going to be an accident. And this is why we have a problem. Once you pass Jefferson Landing and start going down towards Crystal Brook Hollow Road, when that's icy down there, that's where we flipped, three cars have flipped over the past, I've been there for about 27 years now. Here's the other thing. The late bus drops my granddaughter off at the corner of Old Post Road and Jefferson Landing. She gets off there, and then he leaves, and she's got to cross over Jefferson Landing to get to my house. And if there's a car coming the other way, the bus doesn't necessarily wait for her. She's, you know, she's, there's no cars coming. He just goes, and she's got to cross the street. So that's kind of dangerous also. The other thing is, there's a lot of young teenagers in the landing. They have parties up there. And a lot of the young kids who are 13, 14, 15 have those electric scooters now. And they're actually leaving our house and going down to the bottom of the landing and actually riding these scooters and their bicycles on Old Post Road. And it's just, it's super dangerous. And I just think if there was a stop sign there, coming from both directions, people who ride that road indirectly will slow down approaching them. So I'm really petitioning for a stop sign there. Maybe we can move one from the other, you know. Anyway, I also wanted to, I'm also here representing Jaeger's Run Animal Rescue. The last administration had budgeted us $3,000 for something we called a TNR program. It's called a trap neuter release program. So those of you who I'm sure know of a neighbor who feeds an outside cat somewhere, because they're everywhere. And I'm a 501(c)(3) federally recognized animal rescue here in Port Jefferson. And although I do mostly wildlife, I do work with the TNR program with the town of Brookhaven. But the problem is, is they run out of money by like the middle of August. And we have village residents here that call us all the time and ask us if we can help them. There's feral cats in their neighborhood. So we push them through the Brookhaven TNR program, but unfortunately, it gets to a point where they run out of money. And then come August, September, they're having their second litter, and those kittens are growing up, and they're not fixed, and they're having a litter. And believe me, it can really, really get out of control. So I wanted to just, we're having budget meetings, and I'm asking for a TNR program. But I wanted to know if that would, if you would consider that again for this year? And if there's any money still left in that fund? We have about $800 in receipts from 2023. But I would like to keep that program open for the, for the village, if that's possible.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Barbara Ransom, 409 East Broadway, Port Jeff. I wasn't planning on coming up here and speaking, but after listening to Lisa, just from my home at 409 East Broadway, we've lost two animals by the road, a cat and a dog. We've had a car crash into our gate and wall. Thank God for the wall. We've had a neighbor across the street had a car go through their hedge, up into their porch. Numerous accidents on East Broadway. I don't disagree with Lisa as far as possibly a stop sign, but the bottom line is, I think the village needs to look into traffic calming measures. Stop signs don't, don't work because people aren't using them. I can stand in front of the stop sign at the intersection of East Broadway and Beltar Road. They blow it. They don't, they don't even, they don't stop. They just slow down so they can make the turn. That's the only reason why they're slowing down, is to make the turn. So it's enforcement and traffic calming measures, and the bikes, the kids on the scooters with the helmets or not helmets flying down the hill on East Broadway, we've all seen it, and all around the village, someone's going to get hurt. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments tonight? Sir?
Hello, my name is Victor Abrams. I'm from New Jersey, 218 Bergen. I'm here on behalf of, to support my friend, Kevin Wood, and to keep his position. I've been here before he was here. And to see him change the parking aspect the way he did, he did a tremendous job, I have to say that. He, he's very innovative. To go into the Park Mobile app, he was very forethought. He thinks, he thinks ahead. He really does. He thinks ahead. And I commend him on that. He does a fantastic job. I've learned a lot from him as well. He's very technical. He's very innovative. He looks at Port Jefferson, and he looks, looks at the aspects of what, how he can make it better. Or, like, we had a 16, 16 or 17 parking kiosk. He pulled some of, he took some of them out because they weren't, they weren't being productive. So he went to the parking app, and he, he made all these changes. I mean, it's unbelievable, the stuff that he does. It's remarkable. It really does. I can't say anything more about the man, but, but he's fantastic at his job, at what he does. And he's passionate about it. And makes me want to be involved with your community as well. And I would, I would like to, to be involved with cleanups, maybe a beach cleanup or something like that, as far as, as far as metric, the, the parking industry that I, that I deal with, and I deal with him. But we're bringing up new products that are ticketless. So there's, it reduces the, the need to spend money for tickets and stuff like that. So it's just a, it's a good thing. And I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jason Cantino. I'm the pastor of Harborview Christian Church, 315 East Main Street. And I am a close, personal friend with Kevin Wood for over 30 years now. And I consider myself to be his spiritual leader. A little late getting here because I was at Mather Hospital with somebody who just received some, some really tough news today. And I, in listening to what I heard of Kevin, I would just beseech you, I would, I would ask you to just see if in some way, as the mayor, the deputy mayor, and as trustees, if there's any way that you could make it so that this man could keep his job. I think that, that the world has enough hurt. The world has enough, enough rough things going on. And in a small village like this, when we do see somebody who, who I feel comes to work and looks to, to put in an honest day's work, and looks to do the right thing for his village, for the businesses, for my church, where we have between 80 and 100 people with, with no parking on a Sunday, it means a lot to know that I have somebody like him who's, who I feel is looking out for the better interest of, of this community, as I do, as I believe that each and every one of you do. So I just want to speak on his behalf. I thank you for the opportunity. I am a retired detective. I was a nurse before that. I worked in the operating room, and I went to seminary and recently became a pastor a few years ago. I, I believe that I am a good judge of character. And I would not be here on Holy Week, the busiest week of the year, to, to stop and speak for somebody if I wasn't absolutely certain that I was speaking, speaking on behalf of someone very special. So thank you for the opportunity, Mayor and trustees.
Thank you.
Barbara Sapatino, 2 West View Avenue. From what Mr. Wood said, the position is being eliminated? I'm actually asking that question because the parking is so complex nowadays. I can't see eliminating the position without something else taking its place. And I would like to know from the, the board what is going to replace the parking administrator position. It just seems too complex to have nobody running it. Has, have you gone that far to talk about what's going to replace it?
Thank you for your comment. I'm sure the board, if it decides to move in any direction, will fully vet it in this room. So I would ask you to just stick around and watch.
Okay, so nothing has even been decided yet about the elimination of the position?
I, I, all I said was, you're in public comment, you made your comment. The board, when it decides to act, will act in this room publicly. And if it, whatever way it decides to go, will fully lay out the plan in this room.
Okay, well, let me just voice my, my opinion that parking has become very complex technologically, that we get our parking stickers through our license plates. A lot is done online or on the phone. People can pay on the phone. And it really seems to me that there should be an administrator taking care of all the little details. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment tonight? Okay, hearing none. Clerk Pirlo, what is next on the agenda?
Next, Mayor, we have a motion to enter into executive session at 7:24 to discuss pending litigation and the specific performance of a particular employee. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going into executive session.
Gonna carry the chair. Carry stand.
This is my son. Hey.
Clerk Perillo, do you want to call us back out from executive session?
Yep.
A motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Laux?
Yes, aye.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Would you like to start reading off the resolutions?
Yes, may we have a motion, please, to take Resolution Number 3932724 out of order?
Motion.
And on resolution.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution Number 3932724, whereas the Village of Port Jefferson has determined that for reasons of efficiency and economy, it shall abolish the civil service title of municipal parking administrator and eliminate the title of municipal parking administrator from the village budget, and the employee currently in that title shall no longer be on the village payroll effective April 30th, 2024, and whereas the village policy provides that employees whose employment is terminated do not receive full payment for their accrued time, and whereas due to the unique circumstances, the village is amenable to paying the incumbent employee currently in the title of municipal parking administrator accrued time. Now therefore be it resolved that the employee currently in the title of municipal parking administrator will receive payment for all accrued hours of sick time, all accrued hours of vacation time, and all accrued hours of personal time through April 30th, 2024, paid at his current rate of pay. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Discussion.
Discussion.
I just want to acknowledge Kevin's service to the village since 2017. I want to thank him for all of his innovation and spirit and vision that he brought to the village during this time.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, and so just, I just want to put on a notice for next, the next agenda of the work session that we will articulate and discuss how roles will be absorbed, how the role will be absorbed and allocated going forward with the utilization of current employees and various departments.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, ready?
Yes, thank you. Resolution Number 1, 32724, resolution approving the minutes of February 28th, 2024, and March 13th, 2024, meetings of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Port Jefferson. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 2, 32724, resolution establishing two village voter registration days to be held at Village Hall, 121 West Broadway, Port Jefferson, New York, 11777 as follows, from 12 o'clock noon through 5 o'clock PM on Thursday, June 6, 2024, and from 12 o'clock noon through 5 o'clock PM on Saturday, June 8, 2024, and further authorizing the payment of an $18 per hour wage rate for each election inspector working on the village voter registration days. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution Number 3, 32724, resolution approving the attached resolution for the June 18th, 2024 Village General Election regarding the waiving of election inspector village residency requirements. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Does this just want to be discussed for the, as far as what this means and why, for those who missed our last meeting?
Sure, would you like to explain that just a little bit, Clerk Perillo?
Yes, thank you. We had discussed that our election inspectors will be coming from the Suffolk County Board of Elections list. If we find there will be additional election inspectors appointed as well as alternates, if we find that village residents are not, there aren't village residents available on the list more than we have now, then this is a resolution that waives that residency requirement. You're welcome. Resolution Number 4, 32724, resolution appointing the following as election inspectors for the June 18th, 2024 Village General Election at a pay rate of $18 per hour, James Bell, Constance Burns, Leslie Chesley, Wayne Chesley, Alan M. Ebert, Elaine T. Frida, Thomas O'Neill, and Randall Russ. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we want to discuss this for a second, too? Just a brief explanation because we discussed this at our work session. These candidates came off of the approved Suffolk County Board of Elections inspector list, correct?
Correct.
And that there are other candidates who may be still able to be qualified or be on that list and can be utilized because this isn't the entire amount of people that we need for the election. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So, go ahead.
These are all village residents?
These are, yes.
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 Yep.
And the majority of them have worked our elections in the past.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution Number 5, 32724, resolution ratifying the hiring of Nicholas Owens as a seasonal groundskeeper one at the Port Jefferson Country Club at a wage rate of $18.27 per hour effective March 7th, 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 6, 32724, resolution ratifying the hiring of Matthew Owens as a seasonal groundskeeper one at the Port Jefferson Country Club at a wage rate of $18.27 per hour effective March 7th, 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 7, 32724, resolution ratifying the hiring of David Chilton as a code enforcement officer in the Code Enforcement Bureau at a wage rate of $20.90 per hour effective March 18th, 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 8, 32724, resolution ratifying the hiring of Alvaro Antonio Nunez Almonte as a seasonal laborer at the Port Jefferson Country Club at a wage rate of $21.50 per hour effective March 14th, 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 9, 32724, resolution ratifying the hiring of Michael Bowman as a seasonal laborer at the Port Jefferson Country Club at a wage rate of $22 per hour effective March 14th, 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 10, 32724, resolution ratifying the hiring of Saul Garcia as a seasonal laborer at the Port Jefferson Country Club at a wage rate of $23.50 per hour effective March 14th, 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution Number 11, 32724, resolution approving the hiring of seasonal part-time staff members at the Port Jefferson Country Club for the 2024 season effective March 29th, 2024, per the attached memorandum from Jake Anderson dated March 18th, 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 12, 32724, resolution ratifying the hiring of seasonal part-time staff members at the Port Jefferson Country Club for the 2024 season with the effective dates as noted per the attached memorandum from Patrick Sullivan dated March 20th, 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 13, 32724, resolution accepting with regret the resignation of Ruth Gately as a part-time clerk at the Village Center effective March 15th, 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Just for the record, Trustee Laux is raising his hand. Okay, all right.
Thank you. Resolution Number 14, 32724, resolution accepting with regret the resignation of Joseph Sanzano as a part-time planner in the Building and Planning Department effective March 28th, 2024. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay. Just kidding.
Resolution.
He's going, ain't he? He's gonna go, ain't he?
He's going anyway.
Resolution Number 15, 32724, resolution appointing Lee Rosner as a member of the Village of Port Jefferson Planning Board to fill the balance of the term of Louis Bukowski, which term expires on June 30th, 2027. May I have a motion?
If that was a motion, I'll second it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Resolution Number 16, 32724, resolution appointing Daniel Siegel as an alternate member of the Village of Port Jefferson Planning Board to fill the balance of the term of Lisa Harris, which term expires on June 30th, 2027. May I have a motion?
A motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 17, 32724, resolution approving the addition of not more than four and one-half hours per week to the schedule of senior club coordinator Beth Rothstein as an independent contractor at a pay rate of $40 per hour effective March 27th, 2024, with the timing of the ending date to be consistent with the corresponding Town of Brookhaven Community Development Block Grant. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 18, 32724, resolution accepting the attached quotation submitted by fireworks by Grucci in the amount of $29,425 for the annual Fourth of July fireworks performance to be held on July 3rd, 2024, with the rain date of July 6th, 2024, with the $29,425 to be expensed from line item number A, 755.04 celebrations. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 19, 32724, resolution ratifying the approval of attendance of Andrew Freeling at the New York State Parking and Transportation Association Spring Lunch and Learn Event at Stony Brook University from 9:00 AM through 3:00 PM on March 26, 2024, at a cost of $75, to be expensed from line item number A, 3320.4, managed parking operating expense. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 20, 32724, resolution approving the attached contract between the Village of Port Jefferson and the Port Jefferson Rowing Club in the total amount of $22,500 payable as $2,812.50 per month for the eight-month term of the contract for the use of a portion of Centennial Beach as specified in the attached contract. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution Number 21, 32724, resolution ratifying the approval of the submission of a grant application by the Village of Port Jefferson Tree Committee to the New York State Urban Forestry Council in the amount of $1,000 to assist the tree committee in working towards the attainment of Tree City status. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
You want to mention a little bit about this, Rebecca?
So the newly formed Tree Committee successfully put together an application to the Tree City USA organization and was granted the $1,000 to host a Port Jefferson Village's first annual Arbor Day celebration. This will be held just before our second April meeting of the month, so at 5:00 that evening, so you can attend there and then come over here. There will be presentations by elected officials, by, we're gonna have a student come and do a reading, and we'll also be planting two trees purchased under this grant in the maple parking lot behind Old Fields and Billy's there, and also giving away tree saplings to attendees, so please do join us.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution Number 22, 32724, resolution approving the event permit application submitted by Brooke Oliveri on behalf of the Long Island Health Collaborative for the use of the walkway at Harborfront Park from 9:00 AM through 12:30 PM on May 18th, 2024, for the annual Walk with a Doc event. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution Number 23, 32724, resolution approving the event permit application submitted by Cindy Court on behalf of Mather Hospital for the closing of specified village streets and the provision by the Village of Port Jefferson of traffic control and code enforcement personnel from 8:30 AM through 3:00 PM on May 19th, 2024, for the annual Mather Hospital Northwell Health Walk. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 24, 32724, resolution approving the event permit application submitted by Angeline Judex on behalf of the Long Island Explorium for the use of specified portions of the Port Jefferson Village Center and specified portions of Harborfront Park and the corresponding park area from 10:00 AM through 5:00 PM on June 8th, 2024, for the annual Maker Fair. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Now you said, just clarification, you said corresponding park area or parking area? It's written parking, so.
Parking.
Parking, okay.
Yes, thank you. Resolution Number 25, 32724, resolution approving the request of Jordan Russo on behalf of the New York Horseshoe Crab Monitoring Network of the Cornell Cooperative Extension Marine Program to utilize the parking area off Crystal Brook Hollow Road with the purpose of collecting data related to horseshoe crabs per the attached 2024 Horseshoe Crab Survey Schedule. Motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution Number 26, 32724, resolution scheduling a public hearing for 6:00 PM on April 24th, 2024, at Port Jefferson Village Hall, 121 West Broadway, Port Jefferson, New York, 11777, regarding a proposed local law amending Chapter 25, Country Club Management Advisory Council, Section 25-2A composition of the code of the Village of Port Jefferson. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you.
I'll just quickly discuss this for a second. This is to codify that the Board of Governors, which was recently established in January, that the president there is going to be an automatic, automatically included on the CCMAC as it was originally done before the Board of Governors was repealed as part of the governance of the country club. And also, we need to look at the number of members on the CCMAC as we've had several resignations and the operating, that this type of council with 11 or 13 people on it can be more efficiently coordinated with less, with less people. So that's kind of what the new, what that resolution will, will look like with explanation, just as an FYI. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you. Resolution Number 27, 32724, resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to perform attached budget transfer number two to close out the Capitol Harborfront Walkway Project by decreasing appropriations in line item H, 8997605, Harborfront Walkway Project 2023, by $15,093. twenty-three, by fifteen thousand, ninety-three dollars, and increasing appropriations in line item H nine-nine-five-oh-point-nine, inter-fund transfer, by fifteen thousand, ninety-three dollars, and requesting that budget transfer number two be included as part of the minutes of the March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number twenty-eight, three-two-seven-two-four. Resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to perform attached budget amendment number eighteen, appropriating country club fund balance in the amount of three hundred, nine thousand, nine hundred, twenty-two dollars, seventy-two cents for the approved bunker rebuild bid as approved on February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, to be expensed through line item CR nine-nine-oh-one-point-oh-nine, inter-fund transfer, and requesting that budget amendment number eighteen be included as part of the minutes of the March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number twenty-nine, three-two-seven-two-four. Resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to perform attached budget amendment number nineteen, increasing capital fund appropriations for revenue line item H five-oh-three-one, inter-fund transfer, by three hundred, nine thousand, nine hundred, twenty-two dollars, seventy-two cents, and increasing appropriations for newly created expense line item H seven-one-nine-seven-point-two-one, PJCC Capital Improvements to Golf Course, by three hundred, nine thousand, nine hundred, twenty-two dollars and seventy-two cents, and requesting that budget amendment nineteen be included as part of the minutes of the March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second? Three motions? Do we have one second?
I'll second.
One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number thirty, three-two-seven-two-four. Resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to create a new capital fund expense account to be known as line item H five-one-one-oh-point-two, highway capital equipment. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number thirty-one, three-two-seven-two-four. Resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to perform attached budget amendment number twenty, increasing appropriations by one hundred, sixty-three thousand, six hundred, sixty-six dollars in capital fund line item H five-oh-three-one, inter-fund transfer, and increasing appropriations by one hundred, sixty-three thousand, six hundred, sixty-six dollars in capital fund line item H five-one-one-oh-point-two, highway capital equipment, to fund the previously recorded transfer of net parking meter fund revenue to the capital fund toward the purchase of the RAVO five-dash-one street sweeper purchased with parking meter funds, and requesting that budget amendment number twenty be included as part of the minutes of the March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Question on that. So Treasurer Gaffka, this is, can you explain how this is working? What, we spent this money let previously? And now you're just transferring it from one to another fund?
One payment has been made towards the street sweeper.
When was it purchased?
It was purchased last year. The payment was made in May. We need to make another payment in May. The money was supposed to be moved over to capital. It was recorded that it was going to be moved over to capital, never made it over to capital. This is formalizing that process and setting the budget for the amounts that were recorded to be moved over to capital. There will be additional monies that need to get moved over, but we'll approach that at a different date.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number thirty-two, three-two-seven-two-four. Resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to perform attached budget amendment number twenty-one, recording the conversion of the East Beach Bluff Ban to a serial bond by increasing appropriations by two hundred, seventy-five thousand dollars in line item H five-seven-three-one, bans redeemed from appropriations, and by four million, seven-hundred, twenty-five thousand dollars in line item H five-seven-one-oh, serial bond, and increasing appropriations by five million dollars in capital expense H eight-nine-nine-seven-six-oh-two, Bluff Project, and requesting that budget amendment number twenty-one be included as part of the minutes of the March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Questions from anyone?
So this is just converting the bands to a bond?
That's correct. It's also formalizing the recording process of the budget, albeit two hundred thousand dollars short.
Where's the two hundred thousand coming from?
Two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars short?
No, so the entirety of the ban was five point two million. There was a payment made on the ban that was not made with appropriations from the general fund, it was just paid with cash. That will need to be appropriated with fund balance at a date. I am going to be working with the capital auditors as to the appropriate actions that may need to be taken to fund that in the right manner so that we can move forward and get the entire budget appropriately accounted for in the capital fund.
So, do you understand why that two hundred thousand was paid in cash? Do we know why?
It had to do with the timing of the bond, the ban itself, the borrowing. It was borrowed in April. It was borrowed after the budget had already been voted on and approved for the next fiscal year. What should have happened is that general fund money should have been appropriated to pay for the principal and interest payment. That did not happen, it was just paid. So, in essence, the general fund owes fund balance in the amount of two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of this?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number thirty-three, three-two-seven-two-four. Resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to create a new capital fund expense account to be known as line item H five-one-one-oh-two-oh-five, highway capital paving projects. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number thirty-four, three-two-seven-two-four. Resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to perform attached budget amendment number twenty-two, increasing appropriations by one hundred, fifteen thousand, two hundred, seventy dollars and thirty cents in revenue line item A two-seven-seven-zero, miscellaneous revenues, to properly record the receipt of the National Grid paving contribution, and increasing appropriations by one hundred, fifteen thousand, two hundred, seventy dollars and thirty cents in expense line item A nine-nine-five-oh-point-nine, inter-fund transfer, and requesting that budget amendment twenty-two be included as part of the minutes of the March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number thirty-five, three-two-seven-two-four. Resolution authorizing Treasurer Gaffka to perform attached budget amendment number twenty-three, increasing appropriations by one hundred, fifteen thousand, two hundred, seventy dollars and thirty cents in revenue line item H five-oh-three-one, inter-fund transfer, to move the National Grid paving contribution to capital, and increasing appropriations by one hundred, fifteen thousand, two hundred, seventy dollars and thirty cents, and expense line item H five-one-one-oh-point-two-oh-five, highway capital paving projects, and requesting that budget amendment number twenty-three be included as part of the minutes of the March twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-four meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Resolution number thirty-six, three-two-seven-two-four.